That brings us to item 6B. However, I'm going to call 6B and 6C together since there will be one presentation by Mr. McElwain. So 6B is 2325 Southwest Wilshire Boulevard, Bear Ridge, case 22-028. This is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of a zoning ordinance change request from A Agricultural to SFA, single-family attached, to allow for residential development on 14.75 acres before you on first and final reading. Item 6C is 2325 Southwest Wilshire Boulevard, Bear Ridge, case 22-027. This is also to hold a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance requesting zoning change from A Agricultural to SF7, single-family dwelling District 7, to allow for residential development on 158.407 acres. This is also before you on first and final reading. As I stated before, these two will be presented together and then we'll ask the council to open the public hearing and take comment on both items at the same time. We'll close that public hearing and then we'll ask for individual votes for each item. Mr. McElwain?
Thank you, and I'd like to start by also thanking those members of the community who brought to our attention that we had a snafu at the start time for this meeting. So our humble apologies and thank you all for your patience and also council for indulging us with rearranging your agenda tonight. As Ms. Campos mentioned, this is a two-part request because we have two different zoning requests for this property. The property owner is Mr. Walter Mariastik. He's being represented by Mr. Matt Powell tonight. The zoning requests are for SF7 and for SFA, which is our attached housing type typically your townhome zoning is what we see with this area. Just pausing at the map, I want to draw your attention to the rest of the property owned, by the property owner that goes beyond the boundaries of the zoning request. Up against Wilshire Boulevard, there's commercial zoning that is already on the property. And then as you transition away from that right-of-way, there's SF7 that was previously approved by the council some years ago. And the remainder of the property is currently zoned for agricultural use. This is designated as neighborhoods in the city's comprehensive plan. Both of these zoning requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, the zoning is agricultural. We put those blue polygon lines to draw your attention to the size and scope of the property in question. There's a portion of the site that will be coming forward to you at a later date for an encore substation. The substation is independent of this development and was left out of this zoning request. Mr. Mariastik was kind enough to provide us with some elevations of the proposed homes that would be developed on this property if successively rezoned. And these homes would go in that portion of the property that is being requested for SF7. That's our 7,000-square-foot lot size here in the city. These are your SFA or townhome elevations. That is being proposed for that small area that you see on the screen bounded by the purple line. And these are some typical elevations that are being displayed here on the screen. You've got to the top of the parapet wall and measurement of approximately 35 feet and gives you some articulation as well as spacing of the windows and fenestration elements for the buildings. This is being proposed at a density of 5.36 dwelling units per acre. With regard to utilities and drainage, detention is required for properties in excess of an acre. Due to the close proximity of the floodplain, the developer may provide a detention analysis as part of the plat process. We have not received an analysis because this, of course, is dealing with land use and not the plat submittal. If required, detention of storm water shall be incorporated into the design of the subdivision, which our staff will review. Water will be provided by the City of Burleson and sanitary sewer will be extended from an existing sewer line located adjacent to Village Creek. So traffic, access is proposed off of State Highway 174, Wilshire Boulevard. Traffic impact analysis was submitted to both the city and TxDOT. A full TIA will be required with the final plat and will be evaluated. We will evaluate the capacity of State Highway 174 and identify any improvements to mitigate the proposed subdivision. So I want to make sure that the council understands the city's role versus TxDOT. We have level of service classifications for Wilshire Boulevard, as does TxDOT. Our level of service standards are a little different from TxDOT. So this is their right-of-way. So as they review the TIA, they will report back their findings to the city at such time that the subdivision plat is submitted to the city. And we, of course, will evaluate that. We did send out notices to all property owners within 30 feet of the subject site. I went through our process of noticing in the newspaper. We've seen a number of phone calls as well as inquiries in the past. Two of the responses that were submitted to us, we placed on your place setting there. One is in support and one is in opposition. Mr. Larry Roberts has concerns and Mr. Eugene Gaynor is in support. So those are your two sheets of paper that we handed out to you that came in last week and today. Staff is supportive of the zoning requests based on the following considerations: adjacent compatibility to existing SF zoning to the north and west, and conformance with the neighborhood section of the comprehensive plan. You might remember there was a previous action undertaken by the developer where staff was not in support because the proposal was inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan. He retooled that effort to make sure that this proposal met the neighborhood's designation that we contained in the comprehensive plan. When presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, after their deliberation, their recommendation to you, council, is for approval. This is by a vote of five to zero for both zoning requests, the SF7 and the SFA. During the discussion, they discussed the conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, adjacent compatibility of this proposed use versus the existing community. And our city engineer discussed the drainage analysis review process to make sure that the commission had clarity about the roles and responsibilities of city staff as well as FEMA. We have on your screen those individuals that spoke that evening that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll give you a chance to look at that. So what is the action being requested? You can open and close the public hearing. We're requesting that you approve the zoning petition. And that concludes this presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and we also have other staff that might be helpful depending on your question as well.
At this time, Mayor, if you could open the public hearing for 6B and 6C. No, 6B and C.
I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:46 for 6B and 6C.
Okay. At this time, I have several speaker cards. I do have, however, a speaker card from the developer and the applicant. Would they like to go first or would they like to go last? First, thank you. Just state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate your time. Some of you may be aware that a few months ago, I was working on development within this area, and there were some issues, issues I should say, problems with some of the neighbors and like the Wildwood addition where they had some thoroughfare issues, concerns. As a result, before the council meeting, I withdrew that application. And I've spoken with several of you, gotten feedback. I've gotten what I feel like is the best possible solution to take care of this because what we've done now, we were able to work with staff and we were able to find a way to not have to go through the Wildwood subdivision. We're putting a cul-de-sac in there, so basically we're not going to be impacting that subdivision like they were first concerned. So we've eliminated that issue. As far as the roadways, majority of them are actually designated by the city. If you go back and show the previous slide, if you wouldn't mind, Tony, there's actually a PD to the north of us which dedicated and controls a lot of where the roads are going to go. I don't have the details of it, I just know it's there. And the city engineers came back and told us where those thoroughfares had to be built. So a lot of our design had to be done. These are things that we addressed. It really has nothing to do with tonight. It's really tonight's about zoning. But at the same time, I want you to know what we've done to address issues. Another issue, which is I'm sure everybody's here was always going to worry about, is drainage. I've done the drainage analysis, it's been submitted to the city, it's been reviewed by the city, and it's constantly being reviewed. Now, once again, that's a different stage, that's in the platting stage, but I am addressing this now because I don't want this to be an issue later. Like Tony mentioned a minute ago, we are actually following in compliance with the comp plan. We did this because we did not want, I mean, obviously, the city had a plan when they designated these to be residential lots. They're in the city limits, and 96% of the city is SF7. So it falls in line with what the city had planned. In the PD adjacent, there's some SFA there too. So this is all conducive and it flows well into the adjacent development, which will be done in the future. Sorry, I don't do this every day. I knew she made notes. I'm sorry, guys, ladies and gentlemen.
As the developer, you'll have the option to come back up if you needed to.
Please. I'm blanking out here. I did my taxes today and I'm just...
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
Would the applicant like to speak, Matt Powell, or would you like to wait?
Matt Powell, 1108 South Dobson. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, thank you for your time this evening. We certainly appreciate all that you do for the community. One thing that I'd like to say before we get started on this, Mr. Wadlow was coming into the meeting earlier to see the awards. He tripped and fell, hit his head. He was conscious, they took him to Ugly. I'm going to try to get Jill over there later, but he was conscious, he's okay. Our emergency services transported him over there, but if you could keep him in your prayers, we'd certainly appreciate that. So, Mr. Wadlow. So as staff, just reiterate a little bit about what staff and the owner had mentioned. You may have seen the application that came prior a couple of months ago. One of the things that happened, we preempted the design on this prior to the 2020 Imagine Burleson midpoint. And we had got kind of deep into it with some land planning before, so we were in front of the 2020 midpoint application. COVID was happening, there was a lot of craziness at that time, obviously, but so at the time, we convinced the owner to withdraw the application, let us work with staff, let us figure out how we could get into conformance with the comprehensive land use plan, the Imagine Burleson midpoint, the 2020 plan. And so we kind of sharpened our pencil, went back to the board. So we came in with two cases that are before you today. As mentioned, we're in conformance with the comprehensive land use plan based on the 2020 midpoint and the master thoroughfare plan that Kim Lee Horn, the city's third-party engineer, had recommended for the alignment of Wicker Hill Boulevard. That will be forthcoming on the preliminary plat that you'll get to look at. We also convinced the owner that although this is a land use application, so we could answer some of staff's and the neighborhood's questions, we would go ahead and spend the money on the TIA. The traffic impact analysis has been performed, submitted to the city. Staff has been in possession of that for several weeks, and there's been no issues brought to our attention. The other thing that the owner went forward with was the drainage analysis. Went ahead and spent the money upfront to take a look at some of the analysis for some of the runoff, pre and post-development. Went to FEMA, FEMA approved their portion of it that was submitted. Staff got a copy of it. Freeza Nichols, the city's third-party engineer, did their review, came back. We have heard no adverse impact regarding drainage at this point, although we'll be submitting a full set of plans at a later date. So as we fell back and started dealing with some in the Wildwood community and the comp plan, we worked with staff, we gained staff support, brought it forward to P&amp;Z, had unanimous P&amp;Z approval, and this is where we're at right now. We can answer any questions that you might have, but we have two cases before you, SF7 and SFA. One other thing that I would say regarding the proration of the lots, the average, although it's SF7, the average lot size is pushing mid 8,500, 8,800, something like that. So they're a little larger lots that'll be reflected on the preliminary plat as we move forward. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, or if something transpires, I can come back and answer them as needed.
At this time, can we call forward the speakers perhaps? And then it's up to council, but we have several speakers waiting to speak on this item.
You ready for the speakers? You can come back up if you need to.
Just let me know. Thank you.
We can call them back up. The first speaker is Sheila Wakeman.
Mayor Fletcher and council, thank you for allowing me this time to talk. Excuse me, my voice is going out. I heard him speak of unanimous approval, yet I understand there are very few people who have been informed about this. I have talked to so many people, and they are unanimous about not having more traffic on Wilshire, not having infrastructure until, not having more development until infrastructure is done. I live in Mountain Valley. I travel Wilshire repeatedly. In fact, one way that it impacts me that I should tell you is kind of funny, is that since we've lived there six years, the traffic has improved or increased so much, I add it up all the time it takes me now, 15 extra minutes to get into town, 15 minutes extra to get back. If I count the gas at $4 or $3 even and 67 cents, it's going to cost me one week of vacation time and $5,000, just because of the difference in the traffic. So I'm asking you to delay any development until our infrastructure is in place. That's very important to us. I'm not opposed to development, not at all. I welcome it. I want our city to grow and prosper and have more opportunities for the citizens to enjoy. But to me, it is foolish to go forward with adding more and more developments, more and more traffic on Wilshire until we widen the streets. I know that there are proposals to widen Wilshire from Elk to Wicker. That won't even start until '23, and then it's going to run for two years. You also have a bond proposal. If it passes, it's set for five years. Only half of the proposals of the bond committee regarding roads were even added to the bond. So I'm very concerned as a citizen. I hope you are too, realizing what an impact it's going to make on the citizens, on the people in Joshua. Recently, I went to the Joshua bond election, and their superintendent told us there are 22 developments, seven of them brand-new. Look what that's doing to Wilshire. Even so, look what it's doing to Joshua and the schools, the fire departments, the infrastructure, and they don't have it either. Even Cleburne and Joshua are making Wilshire worse. So please, I ask you, reconsider, think about the infrastructure. Let's get that done. Once we start on the fixing of the roads, it's going to be worse for a while. You've got to close down some roads to add some roads. I'm asking not to stop development, just delay development. Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Roberts.
My speech is going to be a little scratchy, too. We've been sitting here for quite a while, not talking. The prior lady made some very good comments. I'm not going to repeat what she said. We all know, by the way, I live at 1816 FM 731. I own property adjacent to where this project would run, be developed. I'll talk a little bit about that a little later. We all know about traffic. Everything that the lady said earlier is true. We haven't even had people move in to all the apartments they've built. The south side of Burleson is growing right now, and we haven't experienced the traffic all those new apartments are going to put on the highway. I feel just like the lady earlier. I'm not against the project. I think we need to back up, look at it, let's wait till the highways are ready for it. The next thing that's a big concern of mine is water. I've lived in Burleson for 35 years. I was born and raised in southeast Louisiana, where we have lots of water problems. So I know the natural water flow where it comes off of this hill that they're going to develop this development on. Everything flows from this development, the total development flows from west to east to Village Creek. Every drop of rainwater has to go to Village Creek. Village Creek, they talk about the studies that they have done. No FEMA study has been updated on that area since 1998. I know where I grew up, if bayous and trees get bigger, trees fall down in creeks, they don't flow as well as they did 25 years ago. No improvements have been done on Village Creek, and yet we're developing in part of Burleson that's never been developed before. There's no big development ever done in this area of Burleson. All that water has to go to Village Creek. Has to be some independent studies done on this water problem because it's going to affect myself personally. The water has to come across my property, and it's going to affect the people that live and have businesses on Village Creek. I mean, where do we go? This development gets built. I don't know how many developments the gentleman has done in the past. This is a big one, and it's on an incline. Who do we go to when it's built and the businesses are flooded? I'm flooded, people that live, they'll be gone. The only recourse I know is we got to come back to Burleson. So y'all approved this without any investigation of anything, and that's all we asked for, just like I stated in the beginning, just like the lady did. Slow down, delay, let's do a little homework on it. Thank you for my time. I apologize for my hoarse voice.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Adam Roberts. Adam Roberts, next speaker.
I think he just checked and opposed to not speak.
Okay. Thank you. Opposed, not speaking.
Hello, which one? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Steve Pascarelli. I live at 2005 FM 731 in Burleson. Basically, I wanted to, I'll hit a little bit on the traffic situation, which I did. I think I sent letters to all of you explaining that I actually spoke to all the new properties that have been developed already in Burleson, and they're, from their words, they're estimating 6,000 extra vehicles on Wilshire in the next few years. I don't know what traffic analysis has all been done, but I'm telling you, this is pretty factual information. You may have it, I don't know what you've got. Also on the situation with FEMA, and the gentleman spoke before, said they had done a preliminary study on the effects of Village Creek and the water from this development. Well, I've been in touch with FEMA quite a lot about this, and there's no, 1999 is the last, is not the time they had the last full study on the hydrology and hydronics of Village Creek. It's so far back that they're looking far back, much further than 99, to find out when a study was done. So in short, the study that was presented to the Planning and Development Committee is using information that is probably 20 or 30 years old. It's not their fault, I'm not blaming them, I'm just saying we have to realize we had a preliminary agreement to allow them to change their zoning on this study. It's one of the things that they're allowed to do, but the study is faulty because it's 20 years, the methodology is 20 years old or 30 years old, we don't know exactly. I got a text from FEMA today that said they have no, they went back to 1999, and there's still nothing, they had to go back further, they have to go into old records to find out when any research was actually done on Village Creek. And that does not include all the development that's in there now for the last 20 years? How much water has been put in there from JSUDs putting water in Village Creek? This development's putting water in Village Creek? And from my understanding, we're not allowed, I mean, there's a study being done right now, but it's only a map study, it's not, there's one being done by the city, which is a different study, but that's a whole nother subject. But the thing is that I'm concerned about is that with all this water that's put in there, plus the water that we know is going to be put in there through this new development, I think we need to pause, take a breath, and say, all the people living on Village Creek, is it so urgent that we put this development in until we get the studies back that prove that the people living on there and the people who have properties there and have been there for all these years are not going to be flooded? I'm not against the development. I really want, I'm for development, I'm for, I'm even not against the property itself. I just am against, we're going so fast when the city can't, I mean, you ladies and gentlemen have the authority, you know what's best for Burleson. Do we need more congestion during a two-to-five-year tear down of 174 and all the side roads? Or we have more developments going on? Is that what's, I don't know if that's the view that's best for our city. I'm not sure it is, but the other thing is...
Your time is up, sir.
Okay. Did you time the other people speaking?
Yes, sir.
Because I did, yeah.
The developer and the applicant are allowed, since it's their application coming forward, are not timed, but all the other citizens are timed. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Pascarelli, and I want to thank you for your time. This is a very emotional thing for me because it's not, it's not just about the noise of the roads, the traffic and all that. That Village Creek, if you just go there and look at it, you can get all the engineers, but if you don't go there and look at it and see the condition of the creek, and you're taking all of this agricultural land that absorbs the water, and you're putting in roads, rooftops, and then you're going to put in the drainage into JSUD, and that's going to go into Village Creek? You've got a drainpipe that's going to back up. And, okay, so you lose your property, but have you ever been in a flash flood? If you've been in a flash flood, you're going to see how scary it really is, and you can't get out that quick. And that creek runs behind Future Farmers of America, where there's kids out there taking care of animals. There's country roads that are going to be affected by this, and these come on fast. And is all I'm asking, you've got the infrastructure for the roads, that's an irritation? Yes. This is... This is life-threatening. So if something's not paid attention to this creek that is going to end up functioning like a river, is what you want it to function as if this development goes through and something is not done to this creek? Its lives can be lost. This is not just an irritation of traffic. This is a dangerous situation that can create flash floods that can take people away in a moment's notice. And then what? That's what I'm, this is my concern, and I've asked you to come, take a look. You can run all your statistics, but if you don't take a look, I've been out to where your property is. I've been on their street. I've seen sandbags that are already at houses that are in the mountain valley. They're getting water up their street. My God. You know, the traffic is the least of the thing going on here. You've got a very serious situation with this creek. Just take a look. That's all I'm asking. Take a look. Go out there yourselves. You can run all the engineering, you can draw your maps, but if you don't get out there and look, it doesn't take a lot to figure out, you know, if you just take a look. I appreciate your time. I'm sorry if I'm so emotional, but I've been out there when that creek has flooded, and we've already got rain situation. We can't help that. We don't know what we've got there, but this we can. I'm not saying don't develop. I'm saying is take a look and see how we can handle this because a pond isn't going to do it.
Ms. Pascarelli, your time is up.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Gene Estes.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, City Manager, City Council. Appreciate that. It's been a little bit timely. I understand. I started recording rainfall in 2005 in order to properly manage irrigation of our estate wine grape vineyards. I remember, however, that even before 2005, between 98 and 2005, when I planted my first vineyard, Village Creek came out of its banks two times, and I was quite surprised. And since then, I have made an effort to kind of record these events. After 2005, I've recorded five rain events that resulted in Village Creek exceeding its banks. September 8 to 10, 2010, January 24, 2012, September 29, 2012, August 11, 2018, October 24, 2018. As you all know, we've had a pretty dry year this past year, and we haven't seen too much, but this is definitely a concern. Thus far, Village Creek high-water events have never resulted in flooding of our homes. We have three homes on the property. Or the facilities, only our vineyards. Our largest vineyard has been flooded four times. However, the last three of these high-water events have come dangerously close to flooding our, three of our processing and storage buildings, and this is a very big concern of mine. More important, not more importantly, also, five of these high-water events over the past 10 years have resulted in significant erosion damage to the south wall of the creek. Hundreds of feet of earth, trees, and shrubs have caved in to Village Creek, and we've had to construct special structures, fencing structures, at the top, all along the top, to prevent visitors and especially our visitors' childrens from falling down the wall into the creek. This is, this is a very big concern because I have called the Corps of Engineers, I've called the TCEQ, and it doesn't seem that anyone is really responsible for fixing that, for repairing this damage that is significant. I had, because of that, I had a quote to see what it would cost me to build steel piers into concrete and pour the earth back into that in order to make a structure that would retain the wall. And it was going to cost me over $50,000 to do that. So this is a concern.
Mr. Estes, your time is up.
Okay, I have one sentence here.
It's up to the mayor if he'd like to extend time, but you have an extended time to-
Thank you, sir. So TCEQ is taking responsibility for monitoring the quality of the water, but not whether or not it's flooding or not flooding. This is my greatest concern because unless adequate studies are performed to predict how much rainfall and runoff will occur from newly constructed residential areas, there will be inadequate management of flooding to protect those living in areas immediately next to Village Creek. Thank you.
The next speaker card I have is Michael Hernandez.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here as a resident of Burleson. I also live on County Road 802. I came here to address two concerns of mine. One is obviously the build-out and not having the infrastructure in place prior to that the lady mentioned earlier. I moved here from Keller six years ago, and I lived through the ambitious City Council to build first, and then let's try to fix the traffic problem later. It used to take, when I lived there, 1709 was a two-lane road, and it took about 15 to 20 minutes to get from Keller down to 114. After the big construction boom, we were looking at 45 to 50 minutes, and then we were looking at pylons for the next five years. So that's my first concern, is to seriously consider the infrastructure first and then the growth. The second thing, as Mr. Estes had brought up, is the flooding. I'm concerned about that because everything is moving south from Wilshire to County Road 802, and that's where our residence is, where we came out here to kind of get removed from some of that concrete jungle. Thanks.
So I have two online speaker cards. Philip Waddell. I oppose this development for the following reasons. The 174 Wilshire expansion project needs to be completed prior to this development being approved, or the traffic will be worse than it already is. The 100 floodplain maps are wrong. They do not include 790,000 gallons of treated wastewater from Johnson County Special Utility District, along with all new development in Mountain Valley that will impact Village Creek already. The next speaker, the next online speaker card I have is from Benjamin Kilpatrick. As a resident of Burleson, I am writing to encourage you to take a strong, strongly pro-development approach. Burleson is a growing city of nearly 40,000 people. As such, it needs more housing. Rents and real estate costs have skyrocketed. To avoid a California-style outcome where children move away after college because they cannot pay $800,000 for a small house, it is urgent that the supply of housing be allowed to meet the demand of housing. Then I have one final speaker card in person, Bill Janisch.
Bill Janisch, 117 Northeast Clinton. I've mentioned before, I don't have a dog in a fight. I'm a residential general contractor. I do work on a lot of these homes that flood out, not just here, other areas, too. It was mentioned, Philip mentioned something about the 790,000 gallons that was done by Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. There was a complaint made back in, I believe, at the end of 2015, April of 2017, an application was filed, and they did have a public interest council response that intervened on that. Village Creek, the 790,000 gallons that he's talking about, it originally started at 700,000 gallons. That extra 90,000 gallons created measurable damages, erosion and stuff like that. We're talking 90,000 gallons. This minimal difference in amount of water flow creates conditions where lower-risk properties sometimes are cut off, where the landlords can't access back their property. Matt spoke earlier. I've known Matt about 40 years, great guy. I mean, successful businessman, I mean, all around, great guy. He's a former City Council member, too, so he's well-spoken, well-first. And when he gets up to speak, he knows what he's talking about. I have respect for Matt, the property owners, the landowner. I'm all about development. Responsibility is my main thing. I wish I didn't have to go out and fix people's houses. It's money out of my pocket, but when you're looking at some of these people are devastated from damages, it's a lifelong pain. It's never corrected. I understand this tonight is just about zoning. The zoning itself, you can't really stop it. You could try. It could be a lawsuit. This is, some of the things I mentioned will be taken further down the road. What I would like to see is some type of responsible measures put in place to protect these homeowners. I don't know if it has to get started at the state, if there's anything you guys can do, but when you hear people say, we won't cause additional flooding, no more groundwater, stuff like that, on this property alone, I've guessed about 12 million to 15 million gallons of water. When you get it, that's not even a rain trenching. That's one inch per hour for several hours. Where's that water going to go? I've been on neighboring creeks where I've talked before, being crotch-deep. The lady I went to go rescue was chest-deep. She's almost six feet tall. You're talking about five feet of water. Again, just, when these things come forward, just think about these people. They've cried up here before. I hate to see it when I'm there in person. Thank you.
At this time, Mayor and Council, I have no more speaker cards. Is there anybody else in attendance that would like to speak on this item that did not speak?
I would, please, Mayor.
Yes, sir. You'll just come forward, state your name and address, and then fill out a speaker card afterwards, please.
I'm Richard Holby. I own a piece of property right beside this development, 32 acres. And there's a lot of misunderstanding on 158 acres. The front 40 acres of this man's property is going to run on my property because that's how the land falls, and it all ain't going to Village Creek. When it comes across my property, it goes down here, not to Village Creek. I don't know what creek it's called, but it's going to be way on down the road where it goes. And I don't see nothing wrong with the man putting this subdivision in. I know I'm one by myself, but if he owned the land, he had money to buy it, he ought to be able to do it. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards. Mayor, if you could close the public hearing on both items, please.
I'm going to close this hearing at 7:20, 21.
Now, at this time, Council, if you have discussion.
One of the things I want to bring up, we're just talking about zoning tonight, okay? And I've known a lot of people in the audience that's very, very capable of this. And I know you're talking about issues happening to your property, and I want to help everybody. Everybody on this council wants to do the right thing, but everybody, Walter's got his rights. We need to protect you guys, really do. One of the things I saw in the application was Walter and Matt both says they're going to have to have detention in this area. What I'm leaning on is you guys making this water flow better than what they've got now. Now, we're doing zoning tonight, and this will come back to us, but I think our hearts are in the right place over this. Bill's been right. He's on the P&amp;Z now, and he's going to help us out on this. But please come up with something to get this water away from these people's houses, okay? Come on up, Matt, if you need to. Do you understand where we stand on this? We have certain things we have to do on council. We do.
Mr. Mayor, we certainly appreciate your comments and your willingness to work with all parties involved. There's really nothing additional that I can add. One thing that I would ask is if we could have the flood manager come up and give us a status of where our applications and our reports have been submitted in regards to our traffic impact analysis, which would deal with some of the traffic, and our drainage analysis that we've all submitted also to the city and FEMA. So we've been using best standards in practice based on the subdivision regulations of the city ordinance of Burleson, and this is where we're at in the process. Although it is a land use case, we wanted to try to get out in front of it and answer some of these questions. If we could have Ms. Michelle McCullough kind of address those two items, where we're at in the review process of the city, we'd certainly appreciate it.
What's your timeline on this project?
We've got some text issues or some signalization. I mean, there's some other things that need to happen. We haven't submitted construction documents. We haven't even submitted the preliminary plat and the preliminary drainage and utility that'll mimic the drainage analysis that we submitted to FEMA. But we're trying to resubmit probably within 60 days to get our plans in for the staff to move forward and continue to review what we've already submitted. So we're hopeful to come in within 60 days for a submittal of maybe 90 days on construction documents, but 60 days on prelims. That's probably where-
And if that goes through, what's your timeframe for building?
Well, the market will dictate that. I can't speak for the owner in those regards. I'm just trying to figure out, hit the agenda items and get the civil engineer time enough to prepare their plans based on the subdivision regulations so we can submit for staff review. We're hopeful to be able to get that construction documents toward the end of the summer, but the preliminary engineering, based on the drainage study in the TIA, probably here within 30, 45 days. But construction, I just don't know.
How many developments have y'all done before?
How many developments? I'm the applicant. The owner here has done several commercial and residential developments, but I mean, this is, he'd have to speak for himself as far as the amount of development. Right now, if you're asking me how many I've developed, I don't have an answer for that, but I do know that in preliminary design, right now, currently on the west side of town, we got probably north of 3,000 to 4,000 lots that are coming, and that's a multiple developers. Some of that, the city's involved with infrastructure. There's quite a bit that's coming down the pipe, and this is just one of them.
So that would be none completed?
None completed. I've been in business 20 years. I've probably completed at least 20, 25 residential developments and over 100 commercial developments.
Okay. That's a number I was looking for. Now, were they of this size, or?
Oh, yes. We've done, we've done 1,000-lot developments. We've done 1,800-acre developments. We've done a variety of SFA. We've done SF7, SF10, SF16, SFEstate in the city and the county.
Anybody else?
I do have, I do have some topics of discussion, not so much questions. If anybody asks questions of the developer, I do have discussion items, so.
Well, if there's anything else, just let me know, but if we could have staff comment on where we are, because like I said, we've expended some time and money into the TIA and the drainage analysis prior to the need for that, just so we could work with staff and bring this thing forward to answer those questions. And like I said, we've had conversation with staff. We have favorable recommendation and unanimous P&amp;Z approval, and staff is well aware of everything that's been submitted. Thank you.
Come on up, Walter.
My other point, I'd like for all of us to remember tonight-
I'd like for all of us to remember tonight, this is only zoning. Now, that point and me saying that, and there's a reason for it. We will certainly look at the things you're talking about when it comes to proper time to do it. I would think that you would want to come back when that time comes. And it will come afterward. Nothing can happen until we rezone. After that, they will bring in their plans of how all this is going to work. Sir, I'm sure you have that ready for us. But tonight is not the night. It's just zoning. I don't mind getting into any of it, but we need to get that out of the way before we move on into the other. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you. That was, could you pull up the zoning change? Well, another thing, I said earlier, I blinked out. The, one of the changes we made to our original submission last time is I peeled out a piece of land that actually separates the SFA from Village Creek to give us the latitude and capabilities of leaving it as ag. It's a zoning issue. Leaving it as ag, so we have the option, if we need to build a detention, if something, if the engineers tell us what to do. I'm not an engineer. I rely on the hydrologist. I rely on civil engineers. I rely on the professionals and the city officials to tell me what needs to be done. But the piece directly behind the SFA between that and the creek, I've left that ag. And there's actually a large portion of land here that's still being untouched. And it sounds like a lot of land, but there's a lot of land that's going to be dedicated over potentially as a park, depending on how we present this to the city, that's not being touched by this. So when I say 158 acres, I think I have about 40 acres of land that's going to be undeveloped. So that's not as fully dense as it sounds when you look at it in context. I just want you to know that we are thinking about it, and that will be addressed during the platting process.
Good deal. Thank you, Walter. We're going to stay on track on what this is, the vote's about, so it's your turn, Tony.
So the question's regarding where we are with the review of certain studies. Text dot is in the review phase of the TIA that was submitted to city staff. City staff is ongoing their review as well and in contact with text dot. The flood study that has been submitted is also in review by city staff, and that's where we are right now. We have not finalized any determinations at this moment in time.
I want to say to all the citizens who have spoken that we hear you and we understand and respect the challenges that you have brought forward. To the owner of the property, I personally would like to see a higher square footage per lot. I'd like to see it go to SF10 even. I still think, and I realize that you're close to Mountain Valley, but you really have a lot of open land around you. I'd like to see these move up to larger lots and larger homes even. That would reduce density in the area. That's my personal feeling. I do realize this is a zoning case, but I, I think we would do a disservice to the citizens to rezone this at this time.
The, I think we should not make light of this being zoning. Zoning is the most critical part, more so than platting. The zoning part is the only part that we have a say, as far as the City Council. When it comes to platting, as long as it fits comprehensive plan, we get no say. We're required by law to approve. We can't vote no. So zoning is critical. When we look at the FEMA flood study maps, we have to keep in mind that FEMA flood study maps deal with surface water. They do not constitute discharge. We have multiple developments coming in throughout Joshua and its surrounding areas that are going to add to JSU's discharge in the Village Creek. As we sit here, we've had numerous meetings in not-too-distant past with homeowners bringing us documents showing flooding inside their homes along Village Creek. The last FEMA flood study was done prior to 1998, as y'all have heard. That's correct. The, the unique thing, though, is, and it's not mentioned, but there is actual FEMA grant money coming in at the end of this very month to study Village Creek. All we have to do is apply for it. I think it's premature at this point to bring this project forward. I'm not a no, but I'm more of a not yet. As I look at this project for the city of, for the city of Burleson, we have a bond election coming up. We have several projects on that bond. We don't know if those projects are going to pass or not, but even if they do, we know that they're not going to get built immediately. We know we're dealing with the state. We know we're dealing with other entities. We know those projects take time to complete. The traffic along, along Wilshire is very evident and very real. The flooding is, is exasperates along with the traffic to create some major problems, some risk to life. We have emergency equipment that needs to be able to get up and down Wilshire. How's it going to do that? You drive on Wilshire today, it's very, very crowded. On top of this, not only is this addition going to be in JSU, which is going to add additional discharge in the Village Creek, not to mention the runoff, it's also in Joshua ISD. And I know that I'm not here representing Joshua, but there's a lot of Burleson residents that have their kids in Joshua ISD, and there's a big bond election coming. Joshua ISD is, is looking at having to add additional classrooms. Now, they're in a unique position because they're going to have to raise the tax rate and deal with an increasing property value. That's a hard sell. I, I don't, I don't envy them at all trying to convince the citizens to pay substantially more in taxes. But that's what they need. I think it's very premature, as the council members sit, to approve a project that I know is going to create a burden for all of, all of Burleson, and especially a burden for those in Joshua ISD. I cannot in good conscience do that to my citizens. I've got nothing with you guys developing it. I just have something with you developing it today. And I would love to see this come back in the future. I really would. I would love to see this back in the future because I want it. But not yet. Thank you.
At this time, Mayor, if there's...
Can we go into executive session?
We're going to go into executive session. Can I get a motion?
If you will hold on just a minute. At this time, the council deems it necessary to convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion by Victoria and a second by Rick. Please vote. Motion passes. We're going into session at 7:35.
Mayor, if you could ask for a motion to reconvene into open session, please.
Is there a motion to reconvene? Do your thing, Ronnie. Need a second.
I'll second.
I've got a motion by Ronnie and a second by Victoria. Please vote. I have a motion, 6-1, passes. We're reopening at 7:52.
Mayor, at this time, what's left is to take motions on each one of these items unless council has more discussion.
Does anybody have any other comments? Is there a motion on the zoning?
I would like to make a motion to approve the zoning request on item, on case 22-028.
I have a motion by Dan and a second by Rick. Please vote.
I want to make a note before I vote as well, that mine is a vote of no based on wanting to see SF10 lots.
Victoria? Motion passes, 5 to 2.
Mayor, if you could take a motion on, on item 6C, case 22-027.
I'll move to also approve case 22-027.
I have a motion by Dan and a second by Rick. Please vote. Motion passes, 5 to 2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've already withdrawn item 6...